One, this is December eighth, two thousand twenty. At nine AM, I would now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Ms. Henneken.
Father, your word says in Psalm one twenty-seven that unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchman stays awake in vain. So we surrender the city of Orange to you, Lord, and into your care. Lord, and we ask that her leaders be allowed to realize your perfect vision for the city of Orange, in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, please stay standing, real quick. I'd like to recognize, and here in a second, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Our former mayor in the city of Orange and former mayor of the city of Pinehurst, Mr. Dan Mohan, passed away Sunday. And he has been, he was a light to this community. He gave back for many, many, many decades to others. And so I'd ask that we please bow our heads in a moment of silence, and I would like to pray for his family at this time. Father God, we thank you for Mr. Mohan, and we thank you for allowing us to be in his presence for all the years that he was here on earth and that he gave back unto your people unselfishly. Lord, we ask that you please cover his wife, his children, his family, and his relatives, Father God, as they mourn the loss of an amazing man that gave not only as the mayor but in the Lions Club and many other different entities here in the area. Father, we ask that you send down your angels and watch over them and comfort them, and we once again thank you for allowing us to be blessed by such an amazing godly man. We thank you for all these things, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
You can be seated. Okay, on to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henneken?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four, approval of minutes, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henneken?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four B, November tenth, two thousand twenty, regular city council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henneken?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And item four C, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty, special call, city council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henneken?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, on to item five, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there is no one who is on the citizen comment sheet, but if there is anyone who would like to address the council at this time? Okay, if not, we will close citizen comments and move on to item six, city announcements, city staff announcements, and city events. Mr. Coombs?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, presentation, Basic Economic Development Course Certificate from Ms. Leanne Dallas by Mr. Jay Trainhand.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. One of the things that the city is very proactive about and has been for many years is professional development. All of our departments have the opportunity to encourage employees to attend various professional development conferences and trainings. In this case, EDC Assistant Leanne Dallas registered for the Basic Economic Development Course, which is administered through Texas A&amp;M Extension Institute but sponsored by the Texas Economic Development Council. So I can share with you, it's a very comprehensive, week-long curriculum on a variety of different topics associated with economic development, and specifically the structure of EDCs throughout the state, which Leanne was able to participate in some breakout sessions. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you. You have the certificate, and we'll do a formal presentation acknowledging this achievement, okay?
All right, so, Ms. Leanne Dallas, on behalf of the Texas A&amp;M Engineering Extension Service, the Texas A&amp;M University System, Ms. Leanne Dallas has successfully completed the Basic Economic Development Course, and today we award you with your certificate and congratulate you on a job well done. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, congratulations once again, Ms. Dallas. On to item eight, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed activity, which is the addition of two four-by-four box culverts to the crossing of FM one oh five located approximately two hundred, two hundred and sixty feet east of Forty-third Street in Orange. Installation of additional box culverts will provide needed capacity increase to the highway crossing, which will reduce the effects of street flooding and the flooding of residents. The project site is located within the one-hundred-year flood plain and in an area designated as freshwater-emergent wetland by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the National Wetlands Inventory. The addition of two box culverts will improve floodwater conveyance and prevent debris buildup in the waterway and wetland area, and is not expected to produce any potentially adverse environmental effects. Ms. Monson?
Yes, we are asking for the city council to allow the public hearing to take citizens' comments. This project is funded through the Texas General Land Office in response to Hurricane Harvey, and the project will be beneficial and improve floodwater conveyance and prevent debris buildup in the waterway and wetland areas. It'll reduce the effects of street flooding and the flooding of residents, and is not expected to produce any harmful environmental effects. And we plan on taking citizen comments until Tuesday, December the twenty-second at five o'clock.
Is there anyone who would like to comment? Okay, I'll make a comment. Thank you so much for y'all's hard work on this. It takes a while, as you can see, this is from Hurricane Harvey, but one of the main topics we've dealt with since Harvey is flooding and drainage, and so this is a step in the right direction to preventing that. So, thank you. Okay, if no one wishes to speak, then we will close the public hearing and move to item nine A. Consideration and possible action to develop a policy formalizing the procedure for council members to place items on the city council agenda. A proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances, City of Orange, Texas, Article eight, city council rules of procedures will be considered as a separate agenda item at this same meeting, if desired by council. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, Council, again, we talked about this back in the summer between COVID and a couple of named storms. We're just now bringing it back. But again, as I've discussed, back in the summer, just kind of a recap, you know, TML recommends that every city has some kind of policy, written policy, where elected officials can place something on the agenda. They do not necessarily recommend a policy, but they just said there needs to be one. At the time, back last summer, the council wanted to discuss it again. So again, we're bringing it back. Now, later in the, later in the meeting, there will be a proposed ordinance amending what we have. And what that is, is basically the mayor can place something on the agenda or two council members. Again, that's just a recommendation. So again, we're here to discuss it. If it's something y'all want to do, I would, the one course of action I do recommend is that we do take some kind of, some kind of action to this, whether y'all want to develop your own policy or go with the recommendation, but I do think we need to put something in our ordinances on how council can place things on the agenda.
I personally would like to discuss it because I think it's important with what's recommended as far as having two council members. I personally, I'm not in favor of that because I am a representative of a particular area. And having to try to persuade another council member to possibly go with something that is important in an area that I was elected to represent, I find a problem with that. I feel if someone is a representative of a particular area and is important enough to the people, and I bring it before the council, or the mayor, or the you, that it should be placed on the agenda if I, myself finds that it's something that important. I don't want to have to have another representative coincide with me to see if it's important in my area. They don't represent that area unless it's an at-large person. So, I'm concerned with that. So if we need to discuss it any further, or this be the place that we do it at this particular time, that's my thought on this. I don't, I'm not in favor of having to have another representative back me up on something in an area that I represent.
So are there any other recommendations, like so, like with, concerning other cities across the state, like what have they, do y'all know what others have done?
Of course, you know, there's a variety of city sizes, but then also the number of council members on those councils can vary. We obviously do not want to require a quorum, you know, so some kind of majority vote, and that would be in violation of the Opens Meeting Act if y'all tried to get together someplace other than a posted council meeting. So obviously, it has to be, for our situation, less than four. And again, whether you do one, two, or three, that is totally up to y'all. But again, I'm just going back where TML says we need to have some type of policy.
So here's, I'll make a recommendation. My recommendation will be, I understand what Ms. Salter is saying, so I have no problem where if we make it to where, you know, because if one person represents an area, and we need to stay as far away as we can from the, breaking the rules as far as like conversing with other people about stuff outside of the meeting, I have no problem with it only taking one person to just bring something. There just needs to be a level of understanding, like, but that doesn't mean every meeting you have twenty items on the agenda.
Right.
Like, there needs to be some maturity made in that decision because I don't know any other way to do, I don't, I don't know what else to come up with.
Well, again, if the, the ordinance is amended that it takes one council person to put something on the agenda, if that's what the council wants to do, we'll certainly do that. But unless there's something already written in there that one individual council member, you would need to restrict the number of items that that person could place on any one agenda, if that's what you want to do. Otherwise, you know, just having an understanding, well, you know, again, in a few years, it could be all new faces here on the council.
Right, I got it.
We probably need also that once an item is on the agenda, whether it passes or gets kicked out, or it can't be on the agenda for another year, or we need some kind of guidelines there so they can't put the same thing on the agenda every single?
And thank you for reminding me. I think the way it's presented here is that it's six months. Again, that could be adjusted by y'all.
Yeah, so I'll make a recommendation that, well, we need to figure out the number of what, so, two items, two items maybe?
That sounds good.
I think two, two?
Because we really don't have that issue.
No more than two? No more than two.
I mean, that's still a lot.
Well, I mean, I know, but I mean, at least two. If we do one, it's like, man, I only, I mean, if it's, I have no problem with two.
I don't have a problem with two.
So, and so in a few minutes, we will, right, we can amend the, the action item, which is going to be later, is the amendment to the ordinance, so we can add that in there.
So do I need to make a recommendation on it and vote on it now, or then?
No, we can do it at that time.
Okay, so just go ahead and close the discussion?
Unless there's any other discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Childs, anything you want to say?
No, I'm fine.
Ms. McKenna?
I'm good.
Okay, I heard you, you're good, okay. Ms. Salter, anything else? All right, good, we'll move on and go to item ten. Consider an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, Chapter twelve, Planning and Zoning, Article twelve point six zero zero, zoning districts and other regulations by adding Section twelve point six one two, governmental properties exempting properties or buildings owned by governmental entities from defense and building height restrictions of the Code of Ordinances, establishing an effective date, establishing a severability clause, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, making certain findings relative thereto, and other matters. First reading was November tenth, two thousand twenty. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir, this is the second meeting of the ordinance that was passed on first reading last month.
I'll make a motion. Remember, this was talking about the governmental buildings, being able to, yes, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henneken?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to item ten B, final reading. Consider an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Orange by removing properties identified by the Orange County Appraisal District as R five zero zero four seven, five zero zero six seven, five zero zero four nine, five zero zero eight one, five zero three three eight, five zero three three nine, five zero three five four, five zero three five six, and five zero eight two zero, five four zero four five, and five four one zero six owned by the West Orange Stark Independent School District and the City of Orange from the old Orange Historical Overlay Zoning District, establishing an effective date, establishing a severability clause, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, and making certain findings relative thereto and other matters. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir, this is the second meeting of the ordinance that would take the West Orange Stark Middle School and the Naterium Future Recreation Center out of the old Orange Historic Overlay Zoning District.
Well, I will definitely make a motion because I'm ready to see that move forward.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henneken?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item ten C, consider an ordinance abandoning the surface only of an alley located between Fourth Street and Fifth Street, and also between West Main Avenue and Green Avenue, while retaining a utility easement the length and width of the alley, abandoning the surface only of a portion of Fourth Street between Green Avenue and Main Street, while retaining a utility easement the length and width of the street, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, making certain findings relative thereto, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. First reading was November tenth, two thousand twenty. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir, this is the second meeting of an ordinance at the request of the college to abandon Fourth Street from the surface only of Fourth Street from Green Avenue to Main Street, and then also the surface only of the alley that runs where the old Capital One Bank building is, for the future expansion and improvements to the college.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henneken?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. I'm so happy y'all are the professionals because I would have just been like, I'm going to give y'all this street right here. Y'all have all the where-tos and with-alls. I'll give y'all Fourth Street, y'all go. All right, thank you, Mr. Knopf and staff. On to item ten D, final reading. Consider an ordinance terminating the declaration of disaster for the City of Orange, Texas resulting from Hurricane Laura. First reading, November tenth, two thousand twenty. Mr. Coombs?
Again, Mayor, if you recall from last meeting, we, the council extended the disaster declaration for Laura by ordinance, so therefore, we have to terminate it by ordinance.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henneken?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to item ten E. Consider an ordinance by the City of Orange, Texas, City Denying the Distribution Cost Recovery Factor Rate, Increase Request of Energy Taxes Incorporated, filed on October twenty-second, two thousand twenty, Setting Just and Reasonable Rates for Energy Taxes Incorporated for Service Within the Municipal Limits, Finding That the Meeting Complies With the Open Meetings Act, Making Other Findings and Provisions Related to the Subject, and Declaring an Effective Date. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, Council, again, the Lawton Law Firm, we lean on them for advice on these type of matters. They recommend that this is denied, so that, but also a note to get it in with the timeline that we need to do it. We're going to have to have a special call meeting next Tuesday at five thirty. So, but anyway, it is the recommendation of the staff and Lawton Law Firm that the council denies the rate increase.
I'll make a motion to support that deny.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henneken?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Motion passes. On to item ten F. Consider an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, Chapter eight, Personnel and Administration, Article eight point one two zero zero. City Council Rules of Procedure Providing for a Procedure for Placement of Items on the City Council Agenda, Providing an Effective Date, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict With This Ordinance, and Providing for a Severability Clause and Other Matters. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, this, again, what we just discussed a few minutes ago, but do have a question for the council on some clarification, and so we may want to bring this back as it rewritten in January, but let me ask you, when, when it was mentioned just a second ago, that the council's receptive to limiting the number of items that a council member can place on the agenda, is that per individual, or is that everybody? So that on any single meeting, that a council member can initiate two, or there can only be two council-initiated agenda items on that meeting?
I think, I mean, I don't know, I would say two for the individual because we represent, there's four of us that represent four individual areas. So we wouldn't ever, I don't think we should ever want to limit the other three to be like, well, you can't, you can't represent your area this time.
Okay.
So maybe just two per individual.
But what I'd like, and that's, no, not a problem at all, but why don't we do this? Why don't we amend this amendment, bring it back in January, where it just takes one council member, the mayor or council member? And again, I would ask that you, you know, take a look at this again, because some of the things on there, a, for instance, is the council member or the mayor who brings those items forth, and again, they have to follow in with the process that the staff does also, meaning the timeline that's met. Because again, Open Meetings Act, they have to be posted seventy-two hours in advance, which means we got to type everything up, we had to get everything prepared, so it takes several days to get something on the, the agenda. So just want, you know, don't want anybody to get disappointed if they show up and say, hey, I want to put this on the agenda, like, timeline was, was yesterday. And again, we can, we can certainly push that out to y'all. But also, where the person who's placing the item on the agenda, they're recording how it's written here, they're required to come up with some of the documentation and the information, those kind of things. So again, if somebody says?
To actually present the item, right?
Right, right, because again, yes.
So then whenever I would read it, it would be, like, if it was Mr. Childs, it would be Councilmember Childs, and then he would read the item that he put on the agenda. Got you?
Right, and so now, obviously, though, if the rest of the council, you know, starts picking up traction, then, then again, you know, the council can direct the staff to further go on, but, you know, a concern, you know, according to the charter, you know, the council doesn't direct staff day-to-day activities. So that's why we need that collective direction from council. So again, well, since we mentioned Councilmember Childs, but say if he says, you know, I want, I want this thing to be done, okay? Now, you know, he can't walk into my office or anywhere and say, here, I want you to do this, you know, no, that's not the way the system's set up. It's council manager, former government. But now, if he brings his idea to council, and the council says, yeah, I'm receptive to that, let's us move forward with that, and then we start our efforts, efforts towards it, right?
And that would be great to reiterate all of those pieces before we put all this into place, because I know, like, Ms. Anderson, even though it's seventy-two hours, I know you probably like them by, like, Monday.
And usually the deadline for the government is the Tuesday about a clock before?
Right.
The meeting the next Tuesday, okay?
Yeah, the meeting's in the hour.
Because you have to have time to type it, put it in the books, everything.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll put all of that in the, that way we have one official, boom.
But again, from what I heard from a few minutes ago, we're going to have it where any elected official just takes one to place an item on the agenda, but also, if something's brought forth by that council member, and it's voted down, unless there's some substantial changes to that subject matter.
Six months.
It's six months before they can bring it back. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Great. All right, so do we need to vote on that?
No.
Oh, okay.
No action.
All right, on to item ten G. Consider an ordinance amending certain portions of Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas pertaining to garbage and trash collection services. Ms. Zito?
Yes, good morning, Mayor, Council. Waste Management has, in their contract, a provision for an annual increase to their rates based on the CPI index. So this past year, their new contract, their contract expired, and they were wanting a new contract, and they proposed a three-point-three percent increase. There's been negotiations, they're hammering out a negotiated contract now, and it's been agreed upon to be one-point-five. So that's less.
One-point-five?
One-point-five increase to our waste management rates. So that's good. And so, we always pass this on to our customers because our customers' rates are exactly what we pay. We don't pad it, we don't charge extra. So this ordinance is the first reading to increase our sanitation rate for the customers by the one-point-five percent. So the new sanitation rate for residential will be twenty-five-point-seven-four, and commercial will be thirty-two fifty-four. And this won't, since this is a first reading, we'll have to have a second reading, so the new rates won't begin until February.
Okay.
And we recommend that this ordinance be passed.
Okay, so the new rate is twenty-five dollars and seventy-four cents?
Sanitation only.
Sanitation only.
Not water and sewer, we're not talking about that component.
Okay, and thirty-two fifty-four is for?
Commercial.
Do you have the number for what it was previously for residential sanitation only?
I did not bring it up.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's been a bit busy at City Hall.
Oh, yeah, I seen you up there, and I saw you up there on Saturday and Sunday.
It is what it is.
And then how long is the contract this time? How many years? Two?
It's going to be, it's, Mayor, it's going to be a two-year contract starting in two thousand twenty-one. The current contract ends into September, two thousand twenty-one, so it's going to be two years after that, and it's not automatically renewed for that one, the new two-year. And we do have Ms. Terry Hudson with Waste Management here if we had any questions or comments.
Do y'all have any questions for Ms. Woodson from Waste Management?
She was here last month, too.
It's cut and dry to me.
I wonder, who's, who's, who's a math person in here? What's 1.5% to make it 25.74? Somebody's got it. I know one of y'all went to school longer than me. That was a joke. Okay, anyways, so it's a 1.5% increase?
That's very, it's pretty minute.
It's minute, right.
You know, less than a dollar, I mean, it's pennies.
Ms. Zito, do you know when the last increase was?
When we had, when we increased for the automated arm, that was two years ago, I believe.
After the incident with the personnel?
Yeah, and we had to increase to cover for that new service. That was the last time.
Okay.
So it went up 39 cents? So it went up, so it's going up 35 cents?
Yes.
I believe that that's a manageable increase.
Yes.
I want, thank you, because I wanted that number so the public could hear.
Sorry, I didn't bring that-
This isn't like a monumental, like, we're gonna hurt someone, this is 35 cents.
Oh, shucks.
For two years, okay. Thank you, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
And motion passes, and thank you, Ms. Terry. Waste Management, y'all have done an amazing job. I think, you know, several years ago when we had the incident, a lot of people were touched by the people who do those services. You see videos on Facebook of little kids bringing them water and snacks, and so, thank you.
The biggest heroes are those little children. They make our day when they talk to the drivers and stuff.
Awesome, well, thank you. Okay, onto item 11A. Consider a resolution of the City Council on behalf of the City of Orange, Texas, to execute an industrial district agreement with Lyon Elastomers, Orange LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company. Ms. Zito?
Yes, so as y'all remember, Lyon Elastomers purchased the Firestone facility, and I believe in 2019. So when they change, the facilities change hands, we need a new IDC so that we can keep collecting our industrial district money. This, the new contract negotiated picks up the remaining term from Firestone so that it will still line up, so that all the IDCs will expire at the same time. So it will expire in 2027.
2027?
They'll be all the same. It also picked up Firestone's rate, which is 93% of the property tax rate. So basically, the contract had just changed names.
That's all.
Pretty much. And so we, so I can get the billing out. We recommend that this is approved so that Lyon Elastomers will have their own contract and be responsible for their own IDC payment.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. A lot, a lot of people may not understand that our industrial district agreements help us out with about, what, 36% of our budget?
That's more than that.
37% of our budget, so we definitely appreciate that, thank you. Item 11B. Consider a resolution of the City Council on behalf of the City of Orange, Texas, to execute a joint industrial district agreement with Performance Materials NA, Incorporated, a Delaware Corporation, and DuPont Specialty Products, USA LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company. Ms. Zito?
Yes, so this is the same situation where facilities were sold, DuPont sold out to, it's a Dow company. I mean, Dow operates there, but the actual company's name that is the owner of the property is called Performance Materials. And one unit, I believe, or the equipment on one unit was retained by DuPont, but it's called DuPont Specialty Products. So we've negotiated a joint IDC since even the DuPont Specialty Products unit sits on Dow land or Performance Materials land. So there's a joint IDC, and that was negotiated with both, with all parties. And they're, this IDC is retaining the same terms from the old DuPont IDC in the same rate of 93% of our tax rate. So same situation where we need this new IDC approved so that I can go forward with billing, and these new companies will be responsible for their portions of the IDC payment.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes, thank you. Item 11C. Consider a resolution awarding a consultant services agreement to Avenue Insights and Analytics LLC for the collection, reporting, analysis, and auditing of hotel occupancy taxes. Ms. Zito?
Yes, the city uses a consultant and has for many, many years to collect the hotel occupancy tax payments from the hotels, analyze them, reporting on it, and auditing. Their contract was up, so we did a RFP. We sent it out to all the usual sources. We only got one submission, and it was with Avenue Insights and Analytics, which happens to be the company we use now, so we're not unhappy, we're, we're happy. But since they were in a bidding process, they, their pricing was favorable. They kept the same amount of pricing, $150 per hotel per year for the admin and the collections, which is very reasonable price. We have 12 hotels at the moment. And the pricing for audits is a slightly higher, $200 per audit per year, but we only do two. We only audit two hotels a year, so that's very minimal increase. But they do a very good job, and they're very helpful, and we recommend that we award this contract to Avenue Insights and Analytics.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item 11D. Consider a resolution awarding a consultant services agreement to Avenue Insights and Analytics LLC for the analysis and auditing of city sales tax. Ms. Zito?
So the city also uses a consultant to keep an eye on the city sales tax for companies and businesses that maybe don't pay the right amount. They monitor all the payments to the city, and if there's any discrepancies, they review them, they try to get it audited to get us more money. And we did a, their contract expired also, that these contracts with the hotel occupancy tax, they run parallel. So we did RFP also on this one, only got one submission, and it was with Avenue Insights, which is our company that we use. We are pleasantly surprised, I thought they would be higher, but they are only $30 more than they had been charging, so that's fair. The pricing increase is fair. And on top of your annual fee of 3,600, they always charge a contingency. So if they collect, you know, $10,000 more dollars from this, from somebody that comes to the city, they're gonna, they used to charge 30%, 35% of that. Now, they're gonna charge us only 30%. So they reduced their contingency fee, so that's good for the city. And we are very happy with their services, and we recommend that the contract be awarded to Avenue Insights and Analytics.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes. This also helps you have free time to do your other 87,000 things when you have these people doing all this for you, right?
It helps, that's exactly right.
Okay, item 11E. Consider a resolution awarding a municipal lease financing agreement to Bancorp South Equipment Finance for the purchase of a Grado excavator with bucket. Ms. Zito?
Yes, so in the budget, it was approved to purchase a new Grado excavator for a street drainage department. And the price of this piece of equipment's 376,000. It was prohibitive to just purchase it outright. So in the, in the budget, we proposed a lease purchase agreement to get this piece of equipment. But, so therefore, we did a RFP to find the best price possible. Again, we only had one, I don't, people aren't paying attention to RFPs lately. However, it is a company that we've used in the past. They're easy to work with, we're happy with their billing and et cetera. Their rate was very, we thought was very, very good. It was 2.29% for a five-year term. So the payments for this piece of equipment will be 80,575.14 per year. And so based on, all of this, staff recommends that we go with Bancorp South Equipment Finance to finance the purchase of this Grado excavator.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and thank you. This is a big deal for us, being able to mow the ditches and keep the waterways able to flow. Okay, item 11F. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager and the emergency management coordinator to amend the City of Orange's Hazard Mitigation Plan in order to pursue grant funding for the purchase of generators for the Port of Orange to be utilized in their Emergency Operations Center and Administration Building. Ms. Brown?
Mayor, Council, this is summary of what we did for the Little Cypress Independent School District. The board approached and requested that this put on the, that we change the plan to incorporate them, be able to get the generators as well. Any additional costs that the grant doesn't cover, they're responsible for.
Thank you, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Item 11G. Consider a resolution awarding a contract to Neutron Electrical Services in the amount of $146,062 for the outdoor electrical repair project. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. This is the first of several contracts that we'll probably bring to you over the next several months dealing with the hurricane damage as a result of Hurricane Laura. This particular contract picks up the electrical repair items of work where we were damaged at the boat ramp, at Lions Den Park, at Memorial Field, and at Simmons Field. And we recommend your acceptance of the contract and award to Neutron Electrical Services of Needle in Texas in the amount of $146,062.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Item 11H. Consider a resolution awarding a contract to BDS Constructors LLC, DBA MK Constructors, in the amount of $579,950 for the IH10 Adams Bayou Waterline Relocation. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor, this contract addresses the water line relocation that is required for us to do to remove the aerial crossing of the existing water line now crossing over Adams Bayou. Under the I-10 proposal with TexDOT, they proposed to widen the main lane bridges, as y'all are aware, to eliminate the low-profile frontage road bridges. And to do that, our water, our existing water line is in the way. So we have done the engineering work, we have gone out for bid, and the results of the bid, quite frankly, are considerably less than the engineer's estimate. And we were pre-approved for the engineer's estimate from TexDOT. So I feel very confident that this will be a 100% reimbursement.
Mr. Wolf, will it still be aerial or is it gonna go under?
It's underground. This will be a directional bore under the bayou.
Fantastic, yes, sir. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolf, that's been a lot of work you've put into it, and your staff, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 11I. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Infomark LLC for professional operations and maintenance services for the City of Orange lift stations. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to preface this. My discussion on this is and highlight to the fact that this item is created and presented for your approval for one purpose and one purpose only, to improve the service to the customers that are tied to our water and wastewater system. The heart of our wastewater system is the treatment plant and our lift stations. We have some 60-odd locations where we have either lift stations, major, minor, or grinder stations. For two and a half years now, we have been under contract with Infomark to operate and maintain our wastewater treatment plant, and they've done a superb job. We've been right on budget year in, year out for the last two and a half years. And I, we have a great working rapport with Infomark. They are a professional utility service contractor, and they operate all over the state of Texas as well as the US. So we, we have good support from there. At this time, we're recommended that Infomark contract be modified, be added on to, to include the operation and maintenance of our lift stations. There are several advantages to this. We've looked at it, I've studied it for the last several years after we entered into our original contract with Infomark. We have, we have three positions dedicated to run our lift stations. Two of those positions incorporate, involve a mechanic, chief mechanic, and a mechanic's helper. And we have a very difficult time keeping qualified help in those two positions. We have a third position, an operator position, that assists the mechanic and she, and mechanic's helper. And we continue to have that position filled. But for some time now, we've had two positions that have been unfilled, and I've had to backfill it with contract labor. Our success on operating and maintaining the stations relies solely on how well those stations are visited each day, how they're checked out, how they're maintained. It's directly related to sewer backups. If you have sewer backups in a sewer system, it's more than likely has originated at the wet well of the lift station, and hydraulically, it's backed that system up. So we want to have the best service that we can expect to get out of these stations. We have 125 pumps and motors that we have to daily visit and inspect and be sure they're operational. There's something broken all the time, I'm not gonna lie to you. With that many rotating equipment at 60 different locations, there's always something. We always have a pump out, we always have a motor out. But most of these sta, our main stations have three triplexes, so three pump and motors setup. Most of our minor stations are duplex setups where you have two pumps and motors. So we have a, we have a safety valve, but, but not much of a safety valve. So we, and then the third position that's currently filled right now, we just got your approval to purchase a new Vector truck. And we're gonna take the person that's in that third position right now that's currently filled, and we're gonna move them over and let them operate our Vector truck five days a week. That operation of that Vector truck will save us annually anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 because we won't have to order vacuum trucks to come help us unless we're in a dire emergency. And that Vector truck will be on a route, like our grapple trucks. He'll be on a route to service gravity sewer lines that historically have given us problems, where we have restaurants in Greece that block those sewer lines that cause backups. He'll visit those lines periodically, and he'll clean them with his jet rotor, and he'll vacuum everything out of those manholes. So we, we want to free up that third position for the Vector. That's what we have, and that's my recommendation that we, we do it this way.
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Second.
Yeah, that's, that's a big deal.
That's phenomenal, man, thank you, I think that's great. Yeah. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Sal, I mean, Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
That's a big win for the community. Okay, item 11J. Consider a resolution awarding a contract to Deep South Racing Association in the amount of $15,000 to host a drag boat races event at the City Boat Ramp on May 22nd through the 23rd, 2021. Ms. Dallas?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The CVB has used DSRA for, I think we said, about seven years, so well before I was here. And they are a boat racing, excuse me, organization out of Louisiana. I know recently we have had in discussion Tarver Performance Marine. They are a big part of that as well. And I would like to point out that with the $15,000, not only brings a ton of people into the City of Orange, but we do have $7,500 deposit from last year when we did have to cancel. cancel. And so all that we would owe for 2021 is $7,500 on the day of the event.
Oh, wow.
Oh, that's good.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. You'll probably get a ton of people because everybody's going to be ready to get out of the house.
Yes, and it's in May, so we're hopeful, and it's outside, so we're hopeful.
Good. Thank you. Thank y'all. Okay, item 11K, consider a resolution of the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, awarding bids for the demolition of substandard structures located at 306 Schley Avenue, 311 Massachusetts Avenue Street, 505 Crete Myrtle Avenue, 708 Livingston Street, 802 John Avenue, 1306 Cherry Avenue, and 2304 Riverside Drive. Awarding bids for the cleanup of properties located at 205 Myers Street and 1609 Missouri Street, authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Caesar Landscaping and Manchak & Sons for demolition of subs- standard structures, authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Manchak & Sons for the cleanup of properties and establishing an effective day. Mr. Knoll?
Yes, sir. On November 18th, the city opened bids for the demolition of seven substandard structures and cleanup of two properties. And the low bidder for 306 Schley, 311 Massachusetts, 708 Livingston, 802 John, 130, no, not 802 John, but 1308 Cherry Avenue and 2304 Riverside Drive was Caesar Landscaping. The low bidder for 505 Crete Myrtle, 802 John, 205 Myers, and 1609 Missouri was Manchak & Sons. Both of these companies have done demolition work for the city previously, and both did very excellent jobs.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Item 12A, consider a motion waiving and/or adjusting permit fees for repairs to property due to damage from Hurricane Laura for 90 days. Mr. Knoll?
Yes, sir. The 90-day period for waiving permit fees and allowing people to live in a recreational trailer due to damage from Hurricane Laura, it's fired yesterday. So if you want to extend that 90-day period, then you'll need to give us that direction, whether you want to extend that period for both the waiver of the permits and allowing people to live within, in a travel trailer or RV, for their property that's being repaired.
I would like to extend it.
Some people still don't have contractors.
Some people still don't have contractors. I'm still waiting for my home, so.
I would go with it.
It's fine.
I'll make a motion.
Another 90.
For a motion for another 90 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Onto item 12B, consider a motion suspending Section 12.611C1 of the Code of Ordinance for 90 days to allow parking, use, and occupancy in a recreational vehicle or travel trailer by a property owner due to Hurricane Laura-related damage to the inhabitable dwelling unit so as to make the dwelling unit uninhabitable. Mr. Knoll?
Same thing, the 90-day period that you originally granted, it's fired yesterday.
Need to extend that.
Yes.
For another 90 days.
Okay, so we have a motion to extend another 90 days?
And a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Before I ask for a vote, I have a quick question. So I have received a few phone calls like in the last month. I'm pretty sure you know about, I think the lady had a gentleman living in a trailer in her yard. So like, what is the difference with, does it have to be like a, if it's a travel trailer, it's okay? Is there something that makes it not okay? Like to where they're, like told that they can't live in the trailer on the person's property?
Well, they can only, there was an ordinance against living in a travel trailer on your property. You can't live in a travel trailer in an RV park.
Right.
Okay. Now, you can't live in a travel trailer or put a travel trailer or an RV on a vacant property either, live in it. So, yeah, there is an ordinance against living in a travel trailer. Now, you're exempting that, you, you just exempted that for 90 days.
90 days.
Due to hurricane, you know, there's kind of that hurricane consideration, that if your primary house is being repaired because of damage from the hurricane, then for 90 days, you can't live in a travel trailer or RV.
But you have to have had damage. It's not just to do it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, because I know you may have had the situation where Gerald had the, it was pretty bad.
Yeah. And then also, you know, if you do, on a normal situation, have a travel trailer or an RV on your property, it has to either be on a hard surface or a compactable material. Also, you can't just park it on the grass.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item 12C, consider a motion reappointing Mr. J. David DeRozier to the zoning board of adjustment for a term ending December 31st, 2022. Mr. Knoll?
Yes, sir. Mr. DeRozier currently serves on the board of adjustment and is eligible to be reappointed if this council should consider, should desire.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and congratulations, Mr. DeRozier, and thank you for your service. We appreciate it. Item 12D, consider a motion reappointing Edward Freiberg to the zoning board of adjustment for a term ending December 31st, 2022. Mr. Knoll?
Mr. Freiberg currently serves as the chair of the board of adjustment, and he is eligible to be reappointed if the council should desire.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Freiberg, and we appreciate his service as well. Consider, 12E, consider a motion reappointing Isaac Tommy Henry III to the zoning board of adjustment for a term ending December 31st, 2022. Mr. Knoll?
Uh, Mr. Henry also serves on the board of adjustment and is eligible to be reappointed if the council should desire.
Motion.
Second.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. Motion passes to Mr. Henry, who's also serving as, in our detective department, so he's got dual, dual service here. Item 12F, consider a motion appointing Kenneth Wheeler to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending September 27th, 2022. Mr. Knoll?
Yes, sir. We currently have one vacancy on the Historic Preservation Commission, and Mr. Wheeler lives in the old Orange Historic District and is eligible to be appointed and has applied for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. So if you appoint him, then we will be at full staff with the Historic Preservation Commission.
All right. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and thank you to Mr. Wheeler for volunteering. We appreciate it. Item 12, oh, and thank you, Mr. Knoll, for all of that. I love that shirt, by the way. Item 12G, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion of intent approving an EDC incentive for Tijuanieta's 2900 Sunset Drive, Orange, Texas, for eligible infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed $125,000. Mr. Trahan?
Yeah, so Mayor, this was discussed in great detail as part of an EDC public hearing earlier this morning where we had two of the owners here, Mr. Rusty Wilson and Mr. Doug Clotheear, and they made the announcement today that they're hoping to go public with the project and open next week, mid-December. So again, this is just a follow-up to the EDC public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to item 12H, consider a motion extending the current contract for chlorine for treatments of the water well with DXI Industries for a period of one year from October 1st, 2022, to September 30th, 2021. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. This is a motion that extends the current contract for our chlorine for our treatment at the water wells at our three water plants for a period of one year. The vendor that was awarded the contract a year ago has requested that that contract be extended for another year. So we recommend approval.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And it's, it's great to have an outside vendor that knows chlorine is a very dangerous chemical.
Absolutely.
A lot of people think of these chemical plants and don't know that actually chlorine's one of the worst ones, because it travels and it stays low, and it burns your lungs, and it'll kill you from the inside. So it's good to have some professionals taking care of it.
Yes.
Okay, 12I, discussion regarding the status report of Riverside Pavilion and Lionsden Park. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor, Council, and I may ask the city manager to, to help me with this if he has some other ideas, but we wanted to give y'all a status overall update on two of our major items that we're working on. The first is Riverside Pavilion, and that project has been declared substantially completed, and we're currently awaiting the architectural acceptance pending punch list items. So we have a few minor punch list items yet to go, and then we'll wrap it up. He was, it was declared substantially complete, I think, on and around November the 10th. He has 30 days, which, 10th of December, will be a 30-day period for him to wrap up his punch list items. So hopefully, he'll do that in a timely fashion, and we'll, we'll get that job accepted maybe one day next week. Uh, the new restrooms across Destroy You Drive from the new pavilion were delivered, and they're set in place.
Wow.
And so our next phase or step in the process will be to set a grinder station for sanitary sewer service and to run a sanitary sewer force main down to our septic receiving station, and also run freshwater, potable water from near the septic receiving station back down to the restroom. So we hope to have those fully functional probably by mid-February, if not before then.
That's awesome.
Pretty good.
That's awesome.
And we, we've been kicking around the reservation policy for the Riverfront Pavilion, and it will be, or Riverside Pavilion, and it will be pretty much identical to what we have in place now at the Riverfront Pavilion. Okay? The second big project, of course, you've seen it as it goes up vertically, is our Lionsden Park Playground. And so it's about 75% complete. The estimated completion date is probably end of January 1st to February. The pavilion demolition at that same location, the old pavilion, will be scheduled for early February 2021.
Good.
We're going to go out for bids in January, demo it in February, and start the new pavilion. And so we hope the new pavilion and the playground, security fence, we're going to go in with a new security fence, almost identical to the security fence that we used at the Riverfront Pavilion, Riverside Pavilion, excuse me. And so that will improve the looks of that whole area.
Will the, will the new pavilion be inside of the fenced area, or will it be outside?
It'll be outside the fenced area, but we're going to move the main entrance. You know how you park in the parking lot now, and you immediately go into the playground right there? We're going to move it around and put it on the, it'll be facing north, and it'll be facing the new pavilion.
That's even better for child.
We're going to try to bring the traffic around through between the new pavilion and a new fence in that area, and a new sidewalk, and have more of a entrance situation outside and away from the park.
That'll help with safe, kids can't run out and get hit by, or be snatched.
Correct. That's right.
So that's great. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Man, that is so beautiful. It's been, I've seen a lot of people post about it on Facebook. There's been some mixed emotions, you know? But I think we did the right thing. I think the color choice stays out.
It's perfect.
And, you know, some people who have went over there and actually looked, they were, when they saw like one little piece of the structure, they're like, that's it. And it's like, this thing isn't even 30% done. So now to know that it's only 75%, I mean, we still got a ways to go.
It's a premier playground, and it's, it's going to be one of a kind in southeast Texas because it addresses handicap.
Yes.
In a large way.
Yes.
You'll be, you'll be, you'll be pleasantly impressed when we open it, and you'll see the accessibility of a wheelchair, how far it can go within the equipment and to the different pieces of equipment.
So nice.
Are we going to have a ribbon cutting for that?
Yeah, I think we're going to have a big ribbon cutting.
I hope so.
We, we'd certainly like to, of course, with COVID, you know, we don't want to guarantee anything, but we anticipate further down the line and hopefully in the spring when the weather's nice.
Have a big, big.
Have our mask and, yes.
Well, thank you for all of that. Thank you for the help.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
The only thing I liked at.
Come through.
Yes.
You know, Mr. Wolf had mentioned a reservation policy for the Riverfront Pavilion. Obviously, and just so everybody's clear that it, you know, the, the idea would be on most days, you just go down there and use it. If you want to go out and just walk out there and, and have a picnic, or just sit down there and read a book, or whatever it is that you want to do, that is the intent. But for things like bass tournaments, or you got a big family reunion, then you can reserve it. But it is the intent that it's just open every day. And again, as you recall, there's a bigger restroom and a smaller restroom, so the intent is that smaller restroom will be open during the day for people to use it as they're out there in the park. And then we'll kind of keep an eye on the crowd. It would be wonderful, we had a large crowd, need to open it. But, but again, as you reserve it, then you can get to the larger restroom, things like that. So, but, but again, it's not something, you have to use that facility by reservation. The intent is it's open to the public.
I might add also, our recreation leader, when we opened the new recreation center, and we have a manager for that recreation center, they will also assume the responsibility of helping manage.
Oh, man, that's good.
Both Riverfront Pavilion and Riverside Pavilion.
That's good. That's, that's, that is, that is ideal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And on to city manager report.
Mayor, Council, just again, recall, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we need to have a special call meeting next Tuesday, August 15th at 5:30 here. It's going to be short and sweet, but a couple of things we got to do, and we'll get y'all out of there. And also to remind y'all and encourage y'all, individual council members, if y'all got some time during the holidays, you got time, come by and visit, you know, and maybe even take a little tour. I appreciate that. Nothing, nothing formal or anything, but just kind of, we talk about some of these things, a little less informally. Again, individually, it's not going to be a, a group thing. And maybe if we got some time, go out and look around a couple of these projects. If there's something of interest that you have of me or the staff, let me know ahead of time, and I can pull that information. And so that's it for me. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, city council report, starting at my left.
I had a call about the trash pickup again on Link Street, that Highline area that everybody dumps continuously. And anyway, she called me, a lady called me very, very upset about it, and, you know? So I don't know how we can stop anybody from.[1516.25]
It's so hard to.
Well, because we don't own the Highline, so you can't like gate it off or anything.
Right.
It's just gonna continue to have to push and ask the community to be better, you know, stewards of.
Maybe we can send those people a letter that live in, you know, down there, uh, on those fir, you know, those houses there, tell them to be aware and try to help us.
Report it if they see.
Try to help us, you know.
I hate that, but.
Yes.
Everybody don't care about their area, all the community, you know.
So, I, I brought it up.
Thank you.
No report.
No report, Ms. Salter?
No report.
Okay, Mr. Childs?
No report.
Ms. McKenna?
Southeast Texas Hospice is having a Toilet Paper Tea, our annual event. This year, of course, it will be a drive-by drop-off, and the first few of you that come, you will get a goodie bag of refreshments until we run out, um, but we really appreciate it. Um, we, we need the toilet paper, even though COVID's here, so, uh, if you, if you can get by, just drive by. It'll be at our office on Ninth and Cherry, the corner of Ninth and Cherry, on Thursday from eleven to one. So, thank you very much for that. Um, do want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, and, um, Mayor Mohan was a wonderful friend of mine. I served with him on the Letcher Board for many years. His warm smile and his jokes, and he was just an absolutely delightful gentleman. Um, and he will be missed. This community will miss him, and my heart goes out to his family.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Salter had something?
Oh, I just wanted to say on December nineteenth, Anchor of Hope, um, located at thirteen oh one West Park, will be doing a toy, uh, giveaway for children. A lot of the different, um, entities here, organizations that are giving, uh, some toy drives like Salvation Army and, uh, Toys for Tots, they have a registration, but Anchor of Hope does not. If you contact them by phone, uh, and let them know, uh, your child's name and the age, uh, they will be able to, uh, come and receive a gift. It's a drive-by type of situation. Uh, no registration. December the nineteenth, and there will be a Santa Claus out there waving at the children. So, just wanted to let everybody know.
December the nineteenth?
December the nineteenth, be, and the hours is ten to twelve. Ten AM to twelve PM. The kids are able to come through, tell their age, but if you can call them ahead of time to make sure that they have an appropriate gift for the child.
Do you have that number?
Uh, I do. I had turned my phone off, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I'll get it for you. This Anchor of Hope, it's coming on. Anchor of Hope Ministry is located at thirteen oh one West Park, uh, Avenue. I have an old phone. Bear with me, y'all. It's coming on. No registration at all. So slow.
The reason I'm asking this, I've had two people reach out to me uh, needing help with Christmas.
Okay.
And Salvation Army has already, you know, they've got their limit.
Yes, Blue Santa and Salvation Army, they're, they're closed.
So, now I can direct them to this.
Yes, sir. It's coming on.
It's okay. We can get it afterwards.
Okay. I'll get it for you. It's finally on. I'm sorry, y'all. And the, um, her name is Apostle Jacqueline James, while I'm.
Jacqueline James?
Jacqueline James.
The number is four oh nine, five, five, three, 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 three nine. Is that sound right?
Yes, that's it. Thank you very much.
Four oh nine, five, five, three, 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 three nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1676.78]